Let's go ahead and call to order this study session. And I am going to hand it straight over to you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here this evening and the work that's been conducted. Fortunately, the governing body is, I think, very well aware of those projects that's gone forward. They've been on board the whole time. So that's helpful, too. And order is yours.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. As Jeff said, my name is Michelle Ferguson and with me is my colleague Ben Kittleson. And we really are excited to be at this point in this project to be able to spend a little bit of time with you this evening. As we were talking before, I know you all have had a very full day. So we will, we will talk fast, but not so fast, but certainly are happy to answer questions. We do have a presentation that we will walk through at a high level. We know that you all have had an opportunity to at least have the report. And so we're happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Please, again, because we're in a room like this, stop us at any point if you do have specific questions. We're happy to keep this as informal as you all are comfortable with. In terms of the agenda for tonight, we will talk a little bit. I just wanted to give you just a very quick background on who we are, now that you know our names, too, as Raftellus. We'll talk a little bit about just what we do as a firm, just so you have a little bit of background. Share a bit about the project itself and kind of the purpose of the work that we've had the opportunity to work with the organization for several, for several months. Hit some of the high points in terms of the benchmarking research that we've done, as well as the specific recommendations that are in, that are in the report. And then, as I mentioned, certainly leave time for any questions that you all, that you all may have. I do think, though, as we get started, it's, it's just important to recognize, as Jeff has said, we have, we have been at this for several months. And I think this is an important milestone in really recognizing what I think we have agreed as, as part of the project team, that this is, this is really part of the city's continuous improvement journey. And this is an important milestone in that process, as the city does continue to look at opportunities to be more efficient, to be more effective with its resources and how it provides services to, to the Hutchinson community. So I think this is a good opportunity to take a pause and be able to share some of the recommendations that we've made. In terms of just who we are as a firm, so Raftellus is a, we are a local government and utilities management consulting firm. We are a nationwide firm. We have offices all across the country and at this point about 150 or so different consultants. Specific to the work that we have done for Hutch, this work is based out of our management consulting group. And within Raftellus, we have about 30 people that are part of our management consulting group that are focused specifically on direct services to local governments and utilities in the areas of strategic planning, executive recruitment, and organizational assessment. I'm a vice president with Raftellus and I lead our organizational assessment practice. And basically what that means for our team is that we are invited into cities across the country to take a look at operations within departments. One of the things that I think is unique about our project team, and frankly about management consulting in general, is that in addition to Ben and myself, we had four or five other staff members that were part of the project team that have been here on site, that have been part of, the, part of this process from the beginning, that have done work. All members of our team come from local government backgrounds. We all have worked in direct service in cities and counties across the country prior to consulting. And so not only have we worked with hundreds of different cities and counties across the country, but I'd like to say we're born and bred public servants before being consultants. The work that we've done, the community standards, as well as perhaps standards that you all have articulated to the, to the organization. And then we also, for this specific scope of work, did some pretty extensive best practices and benchmarking research, which Ben will talk about in, in just a moment. More specific to our work plan, just so you know, we spent a considerable amount of time talking with staff within both of the departments and at all levels in the departments. We think it's important to get perspectives, not just from management, but also from the people who are doing the work day in and day out at various levels in both of these departments. And so our team did lots of tours, spent lots of time at your facilities, having both formal as well as informal conversations with staff. We marry that real kind of qualitative information that we get from our conversations with staff with a lot of quantitative information. And you'll see in the report, we do a lot of analysis. We did a lot of research and contacting other communities to get some best practice and benchmarking information. And as I mentioned, we also peppered both of these departments with a lot of requests for information. And they were very, very generous with their time to provide us really an open, kind of an open door to any information that they had available, so that we had that at our disposal to be able to review it and to analyze it. And so we use that combination of both the qualitative as well as the quantitative approach to really assess where these departments are today and where the opportunities for improved and enhanced efficiency and effectiveness are. And as a result of that work, I think there are something just shy of about 40 specific recommendations that are detailed in the report that apply to each of, each of the departments. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ben to talk more specifically about the benchmarking and the high-level overview of the recommendations.
Yeah, so we'll start with the benchmarking. And we completed a very extensive benchmarking as part of this process. There were seven benchmark communities that we worked with the city to identify and dive into the operations around. And we'll talk about this when we get to the zoo, airport, and golf course. But in order to supplement those comparisons, we also reached out to six additional communities to get information about their airport, golf, and zoo operations. And so you can kind of see on this list, kind of Hutchinson's about in the middle in terms of both population, budget size, employees, and obviously offers airport, golf, course, zoo. Some of the benchmark communities that we looked at for public works and parks and facilities operations also have those facilities, and some we, we got some supplemental comparisons for. So to get to, one of the things we looked at for both departments was the relative amount of staff per, for each function in each department as on a percentage basis. And for public works, we'll start with that, with, with the public works department. Hutch is pretty well in line with the other communities. You can see that, you know, some of the benchmark communities might only offer water utility or only wastewater utility, so that kind of stands out. And then obviously Hutch is one of several that have a stormwater and flood control operation as well. But otherwise, fairly well in line with the, with the benchmark communities. So to get into some of the functional areas, we'll start with the street maintenance group. So one of the ways to kind of compare against different organizations that might have different, you know, size, street networks, different amount of staff, is to look at the number of lane miles maintained per street maintenance FTE. So kind of get a, as close to an apples-to-apples comparison as you can. Hutch very in line with these benchmark communities, right out about that, kind of that average of lane miles of, lane miles per street maintenance FTE. You can see in comparison, kind of a standout is Dodge City, they're very small staff versus their infrastructure size. Kind of moving on to another public works function, we're looking at fleet maintenance. Fleet maintenance can vary pretty, pretty drastically, organizational organization, just based on individual aspects of their, of their fleets, you know, the types of assets they're maintaining, the age of their assets, how frequently they're being replaced, the condition of their facility. All that can inform kind of fleet workload. But the best kind of apples-to-apples comparison is looking at the number of fleet assets per fleet maintenance FTE. So that's what this, this chart here shows. Hutch is in line with these peer communities, slightly above kind of that, that average, but not, not an outlier by any means. So a pretty, pretty good comparison to the, to the benchmark communities that also have a fleet maintenance function. So the American Water Works Association is a professional association for the water utility and wastewater industry. And one of the performance measures they look at is millions of gallons a day of water treated per FTE. It's kind of a workload indicator. So it shows the relative amount of, of workload per employee in different organizations. And so looking at the water treatment for, for Hutch, that, this kind of how that kind of shakes out compared to the benchmark communities that also operate a water utility. You'll notice there's fewer organizations on this sheet. That's because not every benchmark community operates a water utility. Some have a partner organization or another public sector organization operates their, their water utility. In some cases, you know, it's just groundwater and it's, it's directly to homes without operating a water treatment plant. Hutch has a relatively higher amount of million gallons per day for FTE. This might be because reverse osmosis is, tends to be lower, lower staff versus traditional water treatment techniques, but, but not like a total outlier in terms of the benchmark communities here. So wastewater treat, treatment, again, million gallons a day of wastewater treated per FTE is another AWWA benchmark. This tends to be, you can kind of see this across the board here on the benchmark communities, tends to be lower compared to the water treatment. It's a lot more staff intensive to treat wastewater compared to drinking water. And Hutch is pretty well in line with these benchmark communities. You'll see a couple of the larger communities have a little bit higher million gallons per day per FTE. They just have a different volume that they're treating, that they're, they will handle in their, in their systems.
A quick question on that.
Yeah.
How does this compare with our, our treatment agreement on the, on the disposal wells through our wastewater? How does that play into the numbers here?
Our deep disposal wells?
Yeah, I mean, as far as us being a little bit different than some of these others, because we have that agreement in place, how does that play into these numbers to adjust it up or down?
You know, the, so this is wastewater treated, wastewater treated plant, not the, because that, that would be a separate. Right, that's from the, that's the waste coming from the reverse osmosis concentrate. So that's really part of the water treatment staff.
So that's part of the previous slide.
The previous slide, yeah.
That's right. Not a significant player in the numbers.
Yeah. And then one of the other aspects, when talking about water and wastewater utilities, is that lateral infrastructure. So the last two slides are more about the plants, the amount of relative, you know, workload can, per FTE. But for lateral infrastructure, your water mains, your sewer mains, that's also, you know, going to be a workload driver. And so one of the best ways to kind of compare organizational organization is looking at the miles of pipe per FTE or per maintenance FTE. And in Hutch, the sewer water and sewer maintenance for, for mains is, is a combined group, so we combine those for the, the peer organizations for this comparison. You'll notice, you know, we have more, 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 more communities in this slide again. That's because more communities are maintaining that infrastructure versus maybe operating a plant. But pretty well in line with those peer communities, right in the middle there, and slightly below kind of that average. So moving on to parks and facilities, so this is again, that staffing by function, again, as a percentage of total staff for the parks and facilities department, how does that compare, you know, as a percentage basis for each function that, that the, the department operates. And you notice here that, you know, Hutch is one of the few, if, if not the only, that does all these different services that fall under parks and facilities here. You know, the airport, the golf course, cemetery operations, the zoo. So it does stand out a little bit there. Some, some places are only doing one or two services, you know, some are, some are doing, you know, between that. So a little bit of a variation compared to the peer communities in terms of kind of all the different services offered by parks and facilities. So one of the National Recreation and Park Association benchmarks is the amount of expenditure or some park maintenance expenditure per park acre, park and open space acre. It's a way to look at kind of, you know, no matter the size inventory you have and the, and the staff you have, it takes a, a certain amount of expenditure per acre to, to maintain that. And so that's a, a good way to get a kind of a comparison across organizations. And so this slide here shows that expenditure per acre, park maintenance expenditure per park acre, park and open space. You can see Hutch here slightly below kind of that, that average, a little on, on the lower end, but not a huge outlier in terms of that, that spending per, per acre. Another way to look at this, and this is also an NRPA measure that, that association looks at, is the staffing per acre. And so this is looking at park maintenance FTEs per acre, park and open space. Again, you can very similar to the previous slide, lower than, than the average, kind of on a lower end of the spectrum, not a huge outlier either, though. So pretty well in line with some of those benchmark communities that we're, that we're looking at for this. So one of the things we did as part of the, you know, the benchmark comparisons, look at special facilities like zoo, like golf course, like airport, and we'll get to each of those in turn and there's discussion of each in, in the report. And we also looked at some of the, the national associations that are out there, like the Association of Zoos and Aquariums. There's not a great performance measure that's used across different zoos. This is, I mean, just speculating here, but often zoos have, can vary different operations, right? So different animals, different focus areas, so it may be hard to do that comparison. So what we kind of did is maybe like, the closest we could get is to kind of give an apples-to-apples workload is around the budget. So looking at how much expenditure is there for maybe animal, it was a measure that we ended up looking at. And you can see here, Hutch ends up being kind of right in the middle of the, the comparison group. And you notice this is the first benchmark where we added a community that wasn't in the, the rest of the groups, right? We needed to supplement, add a couple more comparisons. So we added Garden City here, Great Bend, the Great Bend Zoo, as well as the Emporia, Kansas Zoo. So to add just some additional organizations to look at for, for benchmarking for the zoo. So looking at golf course operations, and for this one, we added the Heston, Kansas is the, or did we add it to supplement the golf course operations? The rest were also operated at golf course. And we looked at expenditures per round played. Hutch is about $39 per round played at the golf course. Higher end of the, the scale, but pretty in line with, with the, the rest of the communities that we looked at. Not an outlier in terms of kind of that amount of spending per, per round played. And then taking a look at airport operations, and for airport, we added the Lawrence, Kansas Airport as a comparison for, for this, for this group. And then also the Newton City County Airport is another comparison, since not every peer organization operated an airport as well. Hutch kind of lines up right in the middle in terms of the number of airport operations. And this is touchdowns and takeoffs is the easiest way to think about it at, at each airport. And so that's per FTE, to kind of get as low of a comparison as you can. You'll notice, you know, one of the outliers here is Manhattan. They've got commercial airline service, that tends to be more labor intensive, need more FTEs to do that. So it kind of shows that, that why they're an outlier there.
One of the things I'll say about the, the benchmarking, it is, it is a helpful tool to help provide context. The recommendations that we've made in our report are not solely based off any particular benchmarking piece of information, because benchmarking only gives you about this much of the story. We don't know anything about any of these communities in terms of the quality of service that's being provided, the expectations that the, those communities have of them, and in some cases, specifically what goes into the numbers that they shared with us. And so we always have to take benchmarking with a grain of salt. Whenever we do that kind of analysis or do that kind of research, we use that as a, as a tool to help us as we're diving in more deeply into the operations of your specific departments, to use it as a comparison. It's an indicator to us of, oh, well, that might be an area we want to do a little more digging. And so I think this is helpful context to hopefully give you some assurance that, for the most part, in the numbers that you saw, Hutch is right in the middle, is right in line with the majority of the research that we did, similar communities that are providing fairly similar services. Not everything is 100% apples-to-apples, but it gives you hopefully some context for how your two departments are functioning compared to other comparables.
Yeah, no, a great point. And that's also why we look at professional associations and benchmark and best practices to kind of supplement those recommendations, because, because we want to make sure they're being performed to your expectations, the community's expectations, and best practices that are out there, not just, you know, what other folks are doing.
Ben, did you take into account on airport operations, how many runways each one of these other comparables had, same?
Yeah, yeah, so we did look at kind of amount of surface area that's maintained. You know, Hutch does have a lot of runways and a lot of surface areas maintained. It was the largest, I think, of the, if I remember it, all the comparisons. But yeah, that was something we looked at. And we can always come back to benchmarks if something comes up as, as we're going through here, so happy to jump back and forth. But we'll kind of keep moving into the kind of key findings and recommendations. And again, there's a lot more detail in the report, so we're happy to kind of dive into questions as, as we go. So one of the things, you know, I hope you guys take away from our report, and you know, if you're, if you ever talk to the department staff that we got to talk to, is you have really dedicated folks that are, take a lot of pride in the, in the services they provide the community. And it's very inspiring to talk to, to your staff about kind of the work they get to do. They feel a lot of joy and a lot of pride in, in the work that, that they, that they do. And so just wanted to highlight that. You also have very highly skilled staff. You know, operating our own plant takes a lot of skill. Doing some of this construction, you know, work that the park operation division does takes a lot of skill. And so those are strengths that the, that the organization can build on. There's also been, you know, some efforts to be efficient. We, you know, happened before, you know, we came into town and started asking questions in terms of, you know, restructuring, in terms of contracting out services. So the department is already looking and thinking, both departments are already looking and thinking about that. And so they're open to changing things, they're open to changing, you know, the way they've done things. And I think that's, again, you know, a strength that the, the city can build on. And then there's also been a fair amount of cross-training in some of the divisions in both departments. And that shows a willingness, you know, to, to chip in where there's, where there's a need of help and where the workload might desire. And so again, that's a strength that the organization can build on. Some other areas that just kind of at a high level across both departments that we wanted to highlight, there's, there's tends in both departments to be a focus on reactive work, you know, this is calls coming from the public, things that just pop up because it broke at the expense of preventative maintenance. And so obviously that, there's always going to be some workload driver around that, around that reactive work. But it's important also to take, take that workload into account and build in time through the preventative maintenance, so you can extend the useful life of assets, so that you can do kind of those, that best practice work. Some of the, both work, work tracking and work planning has been inconsistent. There's some divisions that do really well, and there are some divisions where that needs to be built up. And so that's definitely kind of a takeaway for both departments and an area to work on. There's definitely some capacity challenges at, at the zoo and at the, and water and sewer maintenance in particular, that we'll, we'll talk more about here in the coming slides. But in order to kind of meet full service level expectations and understand the workload of staff and allow them to maybe, you know, have, have a day off every, every once in a while, there's definitely some capacity challenges in both those divisions. And then one of the things that we'll, we'll talk more about as we go through here is there's opportunity to kind of pursue some revenue alternatives, some revenue strategies to support operations, maybe help plan for capital investments, and, you know, take some of the pressure off maybe the general fund as well, as you guys, and those are, you know, those typically tend to be policy discussions in communities we go to. So it's, it's a discussion that hopefully you guys will be interested in. And then one last thing, we'll talk more about this in, in an upcoming slide here, but, you know, everywhere we go, the turnover and kind of retention issues are their problem. And so, and that was definitely the case we heard here when we were talking with staff. And that can have an impact on morale and can kind of, you know, have a, have a reverting impact. So it's definitely something to take into account and to, to, to build on here. So we'll start with the public works department, and then we'll get to parks and facilities afterwards, same order as in the report. Kind of at a high level for some things across the whole department. Like I mentioned in the, the previous, or a couple of slides ago now, one of the, the things that we highlighted in public works department was employee retention, fair amount of turnover across the divisions in, in this department, couple of them even higher so, and has, has started to impact some of those frontline staff. So looking at some of the best practices from the side of human resources management around taking a look at, you know, onboarding, taking a look at employee engagement, ways to, ways to engage employees and make them feel like they can grow within their role, might be some strategies to improve retention. I know your HR department has done a lot of work around paying compensation, and so that, that was definitely something we might be highlighting in the report.
Do you, do you have specific examples of communities who are doing the engagement piece well that we should be maybe trying here, or?
We have some examples of best practice in that, in that recommendation specifically. We can, yeah, but that's kind of across, just like a industry best practice. It's definitely.
I think right now, in, in this sort of post-pandemic environment where there's so much shifting of the workforce, particularly, we see all departments at all levels are being hit. I would say, and I'm sure this is in part because of a lot of the communities that we work with, we're looking at operating departments like public works and utilities, where, where the impact is, is very significant because of the type of work that needs to be done. And so when you have some vacancies in positions, particularly in like street maintenance or in, in plant operations that are essentially, in some cases, 24/7 operations, you really feel those vacancies. I think in terms of retention strategies, we were chatting a little bit about this before, we've seen things across the country right now that in local governments were never heard of before in terms of retention bonuses, signing bonuses, retention bonuses, different types of benefits for employees that have never been talked about before, at least in my career in the public sector. And things like, frankly, building up childcare facilities within a local government, even at all different levels, to help address perhaps some issues that people may have. I heard one the other day where a community said, if your, if your child can't go to school or can't go to the, to daycare, they have babysitters that they will send to your house so you can still come to work. I mean, so, so I think right now in this environment, people are thinking about anything and everything they can to keep people in place. Whether or not I think that's a best practice, I'm not quite sure. But, but these are, I think, the, just, just to kind of highlight the desperate times that we're in, to find workers to fill a lot of vacancies.
Well, and one of the things that Michelle's examples highlight is it varies organization organization. So somebody is engaging your staff to figure out what will it take to keep you, right? And doing kind of those state interviews and figuring out, you know, how can we keep you here? How can we keep you engaged? The other kind of department-wide things in public works are around software. So there's some, you know, consistency around data collection, around training in terms of the work order management, software, which the platform is Lucidity for public works, that can be improved. And then the application and kind of policy around the GPS software, kind of just making that a little more consistent, you know, setting expectations pretty clearly across the department, another kind of department-wide recommendations that we had. So diving into the functional areas, and so these first couple are both in the streets division. So if I slip between street maintenance and streets division, just forgive each other, oh, oh, hopefully I can clarify if you have questions. But the street division is responsible for streets and sign maintenance. One of the, the things that we feel the department can, can work on is doing some more preventative maintenance around signs, so building out that preventative maintenance cycle, building out that schedule, making sure signs aren't just addressed when they're, you know, they're hit or they're knocked over and they're no longer working, but you're getting there before those kind of issues arise, you're doing some of that proactive work to make sure, you know, those street signs are, are there and they're keeping folks safe. We saw a kind of, you know, dirt alley maintenance is a workload driver for this division. And some of what we heard was around, you know, it's the, it's the solid waste haulers that are back there using kind of heavy machinery on those dirt, dirt alleys that are causing, you know, maybe a lot more wear and tear than it might otherwise be. So I think there's an opportunity to work with them, maybe do more curbside pickup, reduce that wear and tear on those dirt alleys, hopefully reduce that workload, so more time can be spent on your regular street maintenance. So that, but that would take some engagement both around, both with that solid waste contractor as well as with the community to understand kind of that change in work collection. And then another thing for this division is they're, they're doing a winter weather response. So right now, frontline staff do all kind of organizing themselves around, you know, some of the winter weather response, they're, they have kind of a snowbath role. And so we see an opportunity here around engaging some of the supervisors and superintendent here in that supervisory role. And maybe that rotates between three of them and some, or four of them in some kind of manner, to, to make sure that, that there's a supervisor in there helping them, keeping them efficient, keeping the, the work order track, or the work tracking going, understanding that performance, and hopefully might reduce some OT time as well. So also underneath the streets division is stormwater and flood control. And so this was one of those restructures that I mentioned where, you know, departments have both been attentive to trying to change and do new things. So I believe this 2019 to 2020, there were some restructurings that brought both stormwater and flood leveling maintenance into the streets division, try to create some cross-training opportunities and do some more work here. And we've seen an opportunity to improve stormwater management, just kind of generally, and there's two kind of methods around this. One is getting a better understanding of the condition of the stormwater infrastructure, so doing some more televising. And this, this can be done on a regular site. And this can be done on a regular cycle, this televising. It's similar to the televising you're already doing around sanitary sewer, but doesn't need to be done as frequently as sanitary sewer generally. But you need to understand kind of the condition of those assets, and then you can adjust kind of the inspection cycle based on that condition. You know, the areas of town that are maybe your problem areas, you want to check out more often. The ones where, hey, things seem to be working good well, less often. And then the other area that can improve stormwater management is around street sweeping. So the stuff that ends up on your streets, the runoff from your yard or my yard that ends up in the streets can then get washed into the stormwater infrastructure and then into local streams of waterways. Doing more street sweeping can prevent some of those pollutants from getting into your watersheds. You have some watersheds that are endangered or above kind of their limits from the state. So doing some more street sweeping can help reduce some of those pollutants and keep them under kind of that total maximum daily limit. So it's a way to improve that stormwater management.
Do we have a televising schedule for our storm, or no, for stormwater?
We do have a goal, yes, as part of our stormwater permit, that we need to inspect a certain percent of that storm sewer system. So we make sure to meet that goal. It's pretty low.
Is it like 10% a year?
It's less than that. It is less than that. But I think that's the goal that they're talking about, about once every 10 years, is to get through that storm sewer system, which I agree with. And that's been a goal that we have, but the focus right now is the sanitary sewer system. And that's what, we are meeting that goal, once every 10 years through the sanitary sewer system. So, yeah, we are looking at ways to increase the efficiency or even looking at contracting out some of that inspection.
Brian, same question for street sweeping. Is there a schedule?
There is, I would say no, there's not necessarily a schedule on the street sweeping. So we are short-staffed, and so street sweeping is the one thing that tends to get pushed off to make sure that we get our alleys graded, which is our most often requested service, to make sure that we're staying up on potholes and street patches. So the street sweeping schedule, I'm sure that there is a schedule, but it gets impacted significantly because of the number of vacancies that we have in that particular division.
One of the opportunities we also see is one of the creative solutions that the both departments were engaged in was around ditch maintenance. And so there were a couple of positions that were moved to Parks and Facilities. The year is kind of escaping, but it was the last two or three years to do ditch maintenance out of there, align with some of the mowing responsibilities that were already in the department. That has, they haven't quite been able to integrate those groups as well as maybe was originally envisioned. Ditch maintenance requires more than just mowing. You have to kind of understand the system, be able to kind of make sure water can flow freely, be able to investigate culverts and all that. So we think there's a, and we also think these ditches, which are part of your stormwater infrastructure, should be managed as part of that stormwater infrastructure. So consulting all that ditch maintenance responsibility along with levees and your storm sewer mains as part of one kind of unit, we see that as an opportunity for the department. So that'd be moving those two positions back from Parks and Facilities into Public Works, aligning all those stormwater management responsibilities under your supervisor. And then one opportunity we see is similar to what Brian just mentioned. There's lots of reactive work, lots of workload drivers that come to this division, you know, in terms of potholes, in terms of alley grading. And so one of the things that kind of gets pushed behind sometimes is the preventative maintenance around the levy, the levy system. And obviously that's a huge public safety thing for the community, not just you guys, but South Hutchinson, Mino County. And so making sure you guys, that the division prioritizes some of that preventative maintenance, even if that means, hey, we're not as fast at potholes as we would like to be. We see that as something that needs to be taken into account. In particular, animal burrows was definitely something we heard a lot about. It's pretty labor-intensive to address those. You have to kind of go out there in person and look at traps and all that good stuff. And other options need to be tested with the Army Corps of Engineers where they'll let you just go out and do other methods. So definitely want to keep up with those preventative maintenance schedules around the levy because they're kind of their key public safety role.
Doesn't the Corps oversee that?
The Corps comes and inspects the levy system every year, and we have continued to pass that levy inspection.
Yeah, and the staff should be committed for that, but I think they're one of the credited levy systems in the nation. So they've done a great job despite all the kind of workload drivers that they've got. But just wanted to highlight that as something to prioritize along with this other workload that the division has.
I think we were voluntold to credit that levy.
Yeah, that was a BIMA, yeah. Yes, it was.
Yeah, the insurance companies like that. All right, so moving on to the water and wastewater utilities. One of the opportunity areas for both utilities is in terms of the lateral infrastructure. As we talked about, you know, those sewer mains, those water mains. The department has done a great job in terms of the plants and developing asset management plans and capital improvement plans around both plants to make sure those are, you know, up to the latest practice, making sure those things are in great shape. That also needs to be done around the horizontal infrastructure. So doing some asset management around what does the condition look like? What is the investment strategy, the rehabilitation strategy around some of that horizontal infrastructure? That's kind of what we mean by asset management. And then there's some, as part of that, there's some preventative maintenance work that can be brought to kind of the best practice level in terms of flushing water mains, in terms of valve turning. So these are, you know, the valves that stop flow in the water system. Making sure those valves all work, you know, over time, those can get stuck and then break or not be able to work when you need them. And so making sure you're turning those, making sure you're getting a good look at those. And then on the sewer side, making sure we're doing the televising we need to do, the flushing we need to do. And so there's definitely some capacity constraints within this division. And so we talked about that in the report, adding some additional capacity to meet some of those service level standards and best practice standards in terms of water sewer horizontal infrastructure maintenance. And then one of the other pieces for these utilities we see is a need for, to support kind of that asset management work, and especially the changing regulations coming from the state and EPA around letting hopper, adding some additional executive leadership capacities, management capacity to help the department navigate that. And so this is work planning around capital projects. It's work planning around like how do we plan for, you know, changes in testing requirements and changes in lab needs. So having that additional capacity, we think, will help the department navigate those changes, plan for the future, and be able to execute on projects maybe more effectively. Because the volume of project is only going to increase as you kind of invest in that lateral infrastructure in addition to the plants. Awesome. The last section of kind of the Public Works Department is fleet maintenance. So this is your crew that is repairing all the cop cars, fire trucks, other heavy trucks and passenger vehicles. And we took a look at, one of the best ways to look at fleet maintenance staffing is to do what we call maintenance and repair unit calculation and MRU analysis. And so based on that analysis, you know, that takes a look at the individual needs of that organization's fleet. Based on analysis, looking like the right amount of staff, we do think there's some opportunities around training. A lot of the peer communities require what's known as the Automotive Service Excellence Certification, ASE certification. It's kind of a best-in-class certification for the automotive industry. Making sure, you know, folks within the department have, you know, heavy truck certification, light truck certification, and then that emergency vehicle technician certification. So making sure everybody's got kind of the skill set they need to take care of the city's fleet and the unique needs of the city's fleet. One other aspect, just kind of, I think y'all should be aware of as you go through a budget process, is fleet maintenance also has a ton of great data around when vehicles need to be replaced, when you can maybe push off the replacement. And so involving that kind of in that replacement cycle process, we think is a good way to be able to prioritize like the limited budget, have them kind of take maybe a first pass at like what are the vehicles that are based on the maintenance needs, based on the lifecycle, kind of top of the list versus what are the ones that we can maybe push off a little bit. And so having them at the table early on in the process, we see is an opportunity for the department and the city as a whole.
And do we currently do that just based on years in use instead of need?
Not always. I know in the time that I've been there, I've had direct communication with Kirk. And sometimes it's, a vehicle or a unit might meet the age requirement, but it's so infrequently used that it really doesn't make sense to replace it, especially when you go out and lease it for such infrequent use at a much lower cost. So those are the ones that he's helped us defer through Brian's help. We've kind of broken that tradition, I think, in this last couple of years. I think everybody has, because we didn't really know where we'd be with all the COVID stuff. So we're definitely doing that. And certifications for heavy fleet and all that, that's something that certainly we'll do more of, but we do that. Especially on the fireside for the heavier court load.
That seems like a better way of handling, better stewardship.
I'm happy to go back to Public Works if any of you guys think you have any questions, but we'll move to Parks and Facilities here. So again, kind of on a department-wide level, one of the things that stood out to us for Parks and Facilities around becoming more data-driven, doing more work planning. So this is establishing performance measures for each division. And again, some divisions have this really well set up, really thorough, others it needs to be built up. Same with in terms of work planning, make sure you're taking a look at when does this maintenance task need to be done? How long does it typically take? How many of these things do we have to take care of? So you can kind of plan that year and then estimate like where your people will be throughout the year and the amount of time that you need to meet the service level expectations of the community and of you guys, right? So doing some of that work planning will help on the front end and then help build in capacity for that preventative maintenance that we talked about earlier, right? So making sure that there's capacity to do some of that preventative maintenance work both on the park side and the facility management side. Another aspect that we saw as kind of a department-wide thing was around the work order management system. So right now, this is kind of across the department done in a pretty manual manner. So either through paper sheets where staff kind of write what they did in the day, almost like a timesheet. They write kind of where they were, what kind of tasks they did. Or it's done, you know, by email or kind of calendar reminders to, oh, I need to do this next month. So making that maybe more centralized, either through a software system or just kind of a more centralized system where more folks can see what's going on, understand kind of the plan, and understand how the work orders that are coming in, both requests from other departments in terms of facility maintenance and also requests from the community when, you know, something's broken in a park. Be able to balance that with also your preventative maintenance tasks that we might prioritize as well.
Is there an industry standard in your workforce software for a work order system for parks?
There, there's not, unfortunately.
I think that's a huge problem, and this is why I think our parks suffer at the cost of facility maintenance. Because there's no work order system to kind of describe where time is being spent.
Something I've worked on for multiple years, and there's just, I've done multiple, and nothing is going to fit exactly like what we need. One is because we're so diverse. But this has been something on my mind for a long time. We've got to be able to produce that data and understand how much we have and how much we spend time-wise. Unfortunately, there just isn't that perfect product like there is in the public work sector because it's generally pretty common for one department to know what we're looking for. Kind of a unique, um, department.
Some cities will use what is more typical in a public works operations for their parks' specific maintenance operations because that's the closest thing. And then, because what's out there on the market for recreation looks very different. And so it would almost be as if you'd have to maintain two systems, and that even makes it more complicated.
And then if you have to defer facility maintenance on top of that, then I don't want to manage multiple systems.
Yeah, and not when your goal is efficiency. That's why you have a system.
Yeah, finding that one perfect software is very difficult. And, you know, we always say like the ultimate software solution, kind of, we're agnostic, right? But it's being able to plan that preventative maintenance work and be able to track kind of the reactive work is what's kind of important.
And to be fair, some organizations don't have a software system. They do it on Excel spreadsheets and an access database or something like that. So you can do it without having to go through the expense and oftentimes the headache of having to have that. It may not be the perfect solution, but it is an option.
Yeah. Okay, that's helpful. Helpful to know we're not alone.
Yeah, definitely.
So then one of the other department-wide things that stood out to us in terms of Parks and Facilities is around cost recovery. And so this is the revenue to support Parks and Facilities operations. And we'll talk more about this as we get to some of the specialty facility operations. But this is setting up kind of expectations around, you know, how much revenue should we be bringing to support this? And honestly, this is a policy conversation, right? So it's hopefully a conversation you guys are willing to engage in around what's our expectation in terms of revenue? What's our expectation in terms of the general fund subsidy for some of these services that we offer? And so one of the ways to kind of think about this in the Parks and Rec space is this pyramid that's on this slide, and it's also in the report as well. Hopefully you see this okay. But most services offered by local governments are kind of at the bottom of the pyramid. That's why it's the widest part, right? There are community benefits, they're for everyone, and maybe you shouldn't be charging for them. You know, having open spaces is something that we want everyone to have access to. So we're not going to maybe charge for every time someone walks into a park. But there are other services that maybe benefit through people, more of an individual benefit. You know, talking about like picnic shelter rentals. You know, maybe an adult support league if you're operating a recreation department, which I know you guys aren't. But those are maybe more individual benefits compared to community benefits. So the higher up the pyramid you get, the more individual the benefit, maybe the more subsidy there should be. And so again, this is a conversation around what are each of our services? How does it fit on this continuing? And what's the level of subsidy that we're comfortable with as a governing body around the general fund supporting this? Is kind of every resident in the community is supporting this, or every, you know, person coming to Hutchinson is supporting this? Versus we want, we think the people doing this need to kind of subsidize more of this. So this is definitely, and we'll talk more about this as we get to Zoo, Gulf Course, and Airport, but definitely a standout for those three divisions especially. And I'll also say this helps departments plan their staffing needs, their capital investment needs. Knowing what kind of subsidy they need to bring in can help them think through some of those problems and help set those expectations across, you know, you guys, the community, and staff. So moving to some of those operation areas within the department, we'll start with Facilities Management. So one of the things, you know, we talked about this at the top, but improving kind of the data, work order management, the work planning on facility management, we definitely see as an opportunity for improvement. And one of the ways I think we think that this can help with that is giving that Assistant Director kind of supervisory authority over this group, Park Operations Division, kind of getting more involved in the day-to-day, setting up those work planning systems, setting up those data systems, that data collection systems, doing, helping with some of that management capacity, that management need there. And this is about, you know, assessing the condition of facilities, understanding the maintenance needs, and then setting up those schedules to kind of meet those needs. Because each facility is going to be different, you know, this one's been the model more recently than Memorial Hall. So those needs are going to be different, facility by facility. And then there's also, you know, you have a very skilled and willing and, you know, Park Operations staff that doesn't say no to much of anything, I don't, it didn't sound like. So they're willing to do a lot of stuff for you guys, and they want to make things work. But there needs to be recognition that when they do construction projects, like, you know, I think we heard a lot about a pickleball court. When they're doing those construction projects, that also comes in an opportunity cost. So there are preventative maintenance things, there are reactive things, that things that might break in the parks or in facilities that they can't get to as fast. Or if they get to, now all of a sudden that construction project's taking a lot longer. So there's a push-pull when you do kind of that outsourcing around, well, if we, you know, say this is a priority, what's coming off the table? Or if we say this is a priority, maybe we need to give them another, more capacity to do this on a timely manner. So we think there's a need to think about what's maybe a way to incorporate labor costs, incorporate administrative overhead when we're talking about, you know, that groups especially, taking on a big construction project in addition to regular workload. Because that workload's not going away, right? So in terms of park maintenance, one of the things that stood out to us is that this park maintenance work group, and I believe it's the Horticulture and Forestry Division, has tended to specialize. You know, you have folks that maybe have the skill set, experience in athletic field maintenance in Forest Street, and they want to do that work. So they tend to specialize in that. And what that's kind of created over time is less collaboration, less resource sharing. And so, and it creates kind of some silos and some barriers. And so rather than having those silos, we'd like to see kind of that department create more of a general labor pool where folks are cross-trained, similar like we talked about with Streets, where the Streets division, where there's lots of cross-training, lots of different folks doing different types of maintenance activities. Similar kind of concept here where the general labor pool for all park maintenance activities. Supervisors kind of doing more on the job site sort of lead maintenance worker work rather than maybe office-based work to help both address kind of capacity for the division as well as, you know, being able to resource share more effectively. One of the things we've kind of maybe stood out to us was around forestry management. Right now, there's been a position, or at least at the time of the report, a position, a forestry technician position that had been open for several years, been unable to kind of fill, been a difficult position to recruit for. workload that, you know, if you're taking care of all the city trees and city Workload that, you know, if you're taking care of all the city trees and city parks and non-city properties, you know, that's a lot of trees that you need to maintain. So it's workload that's hard to keep up with. And then some divisions, because they need it done, like the golf course, like the airport, they've been able to contract that work out pretty effectively. So rather than continue to kind of do it in a way where we can't meet our expectations and, you know, can't, can't serve all the parts of the city that need to be served, maybe looking at some contracting opportunities here where, where we can get kind of that forestry maintenance under, under one contract hopefully, and be able to maybe do that more cost-effectively and meet the service level expectation and gain enough kind of, of the community. One of the other areas that we took a look at was in terms of mowing. There's lots of mowing responsibility across both parks and facilities as well as public works. There's mowing at, at the, the treatment facilities, obviously in every park. And there's also different service level standards, you know, for irrigated parks with, you know, watering at them. Folks are trying to mow those more frequently, it's about every seven days is the, is the service standard. And then for un-irrigated parks, it's seven fourteen. So different standards, but clear standards, and then lots of different folks that, you know, trying to do some mowing. This, you know, obviously leads to lots of, you know, duplicative equipment, duplicative work. You have maybe some water operators that maybe their time might be better spent doing other things rather than mowing. So thinking about how can we consolidate this work? Maybe it's under the same division that's already doing mowing, maybe it's under, it's a more of a mix, more contracting work, or a different mix of contracting versus insourcing. So taking a look at some of these sites and thinking about them more holistically in terms of what are all the sites that need to be mowed, how long do they take to mow now? What's the cost of the contract versus that time? And, and being able to look at that kind of comparison to see what would work best for the community. So getting into the specialty facilities that we mentioned at the top. First one is the zoo operations. So one of the things that stood out to us was in terms of capacity here. Both at the rehabilitation center, and I'll pause real quick here. The rehabilitation center is sort of a unique operation, even amongst the peer organizations that we looked at for zoo. It's one of two zoos, any kind of that peer list that have a rea-, or you guys are one of two that have a rehabilitation center. And it's, the other, the other one only does birds of prey, so predators, racers. So has like a much narrow niche, right? Your guys' rehabilitation center, it's any native injured orphaned animal that's native to the state of Kansas. So that's just a different volume that we're talking about, right? And they have a pretty heavy workload come in spring, summer, into fall, where there's lots of animals coming in the door that need to be taken care of, needed to be looked after. And right now, that's only staffed with one part-time employee, and then the other zookeepers cover as they can. The main zoo is open every day of the year, except for Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Year's, I don't look at that right now. So it's just about. And then even those days when they're closed, there still needs to be animal care done. There's still responsibility to take care of those animals and do kind of maintenance work, even when the zoo is closed. And, you know, even if you close the zoo more, more than it's open now, there's, those maintenance needs are still going to exist. Those animal care needs are still going to exist. So right now, the staffing doesn't take into account that seven-day-a-week operation. You have five staff for five exhibit areas for seven days a week, so not, not all that kind of adds up. When we did kind of the math around meeting animal care protocols, meeting maintenance needs, meeting those just schedule requirements of how do you cover, you know, five positions over seven days a week? We saw, and then the rehabilitation center we started with, you know, we saw a gap of about, of over four, equivalent of four FTEs. And so there's definitely a need to address capacity here. Obviously, that's a, that's a big ask in one year, and we think building in a couple of employees and to help address some, take some of the pressure off, allow folks to kind of, you know, have enough coverage to meet those seven-day-a-week work week, to address kind of that, that high volume in the rehabilitation center.
Doesn't the budget have eight people at the zoo?
Yeah, there are eight people at the zoo, but five are zookeepers. And then one of the other areas here that stood out to us was around the vision for the zoo, right? So there's lots of different folks that have opinions about where the zoo needs to go. So there's staff, there's you guys as a policymaking body, there's the community. So we think there's an opportunity here to come together and decide what is our vision as a community for the zoo? What is the long-term, five-year, 10-year goal? And that can help inform maybe these staffing decisions. Maybe, you know, some of this stuff changes, maybe we take a look at what the service level is now and, and adjust it based on, based on that vision. And that can inform, you know, if our vision is, you know, we want to have the biggest, you know, greatest zoo in the world, that means you're going to have to have a lot more investment, right? And so that can inform capital investments, it can inform staffing needs as well. And then like we talked about in that cost recovery slide, the zoo is, is an area where, you know, that, that's an opportunity. Right now, the zoo's free to all that come, I got to go through it and, you know, no one charged me admission. But there's a great answer to see.
Donations.
But there's no admission fee charged, right? And so one of, one of the opportunities to create additional revenue sources to, both for operations and for kind of future capital investments, is to, to think about those, think about an admission fee. And so some of the peer communities charge admission fees, some don't. So it's, it's not like, you know, at the end of the day, it's a policy choice for y'all. Is it, do you prioritize kind of, hey, let's bring in some revenue to support this versus we want it to be open to everybody, and we see it as that bottom of the pyramid, that community benefit for everyone? So in terms of golf course maintenance, this is a group that had very well-defined service level expectations, very well-defined, hey, we know how long it takes us to mow all the greens, address all the bunkers. So, and in terms of kind of their maintenance needs, they're at about the right staffing level. But you've got some staff that have been there a really long time, they really know their stuff, and they're approaching retirement. And so there is a need to kind of start documenting the procedures, documenting their knowledge, so you can start to plan for when those folks eventually retire or move on from the organization. They need to find somebody else to fill their shoes. So that's definitely in terms of the golf maintenance at that golf course. And it's a beautiful course, you know, we got to go out there. I didn't play any rounds, I got to visit the zoo, I didn't play the golf course. But it's a beautiful course, and in order to keep it that way, you got to have kind of the folks with that skill set, that knowledge, to be able to kind of meet those expectations. The pro shop and the cafe are definitely a pinch point for, for this division. You know, that's, that's kind of your, one of your main places where all the, the folks that use the golf course come in. There's some peak hours of the day and week and during tournaments. There's some peak times where that's really a crunch for folks. And you have two golf pro-type staff that are supposed to be your kind of front-facing customer service folks that end up getting pulled in to support cafe or having to cover, you know, for a part-time person who can come in that day at the pro shop. And so they're, they're getting pulled away from maybe the more direct customer service that you'd rather they be doing, where they're out on the course talking to folks, they're out on the course making sure that, you know, people are doing what they should be doing out on that course. So one of the opportunities here might be to take a look at contract and say, hey, is there anybody out here that might be able to have more flexibility than us to attract part-time staff to operate this for us? And then if, if that doesn't work out, maybe it's take a look at, you know, we have this golf, this golf pro shop, this, this cafe, but doesn't need to be open as, as often as it is open, maybe it's only open on term of business. So there's some, some opportunities to rethink kind of how that, that's been approached recently. And then similar to the zoo and kind of when we talked about department-wide, some cost recovery option discussion as well for the golf course. So there's right now about, I think it's about 30% general fund subsidy to the golf course to make, keep operations going, keep that place looking good. Is that the right number? At the end of the day, kind of, it's a policy choice for y'all, where, what should that subsidy be? You know, maybe there's certain types of golfers that we want to subsidize, and there's others that we don't. So it can be detailed, as granular as you want, or you can just say, hey, for this golf course, this is the amount of subsidy we're talking about. But again, that's a, a conversation that needs to be had. So for the airport, we took a look at kind of the maintenance needs, the operations out there. See that kind of the, the current staffing is about appropriate for what they're expected to do. There's a mix out there, like we talked about kind of at the start, where there's a mix of contracted services being performed, as well as services being performed by staff. But there's a need for, what is the vision for this airport? You know, your airport manager's got one vision, your city leadership might have a different, the business community might have a different, the people that use the airport might have a different vision. And so what, what should that be? And again, this is a policy choice where, this is where we see this going, and that can inform, you know, what we do out there in terms of replacing runways, in terms of rebuilding or adding to warehouses, in terms of the fees we charge out there, in terms of the staffing out there. So understanding kind of that vision can help inform a lot of the operating capital investment needs for, for the airport. But this is an opportunity to engage in terms of a business development hand, because this is more of a economic development jar maybe than, than a zoo might be. Thinking about, you know, what is the business, engaging that business community, engaging those user groups out of the airport, engaging staff and you all in terms of what is our vision, where do we want this to go in five or 10 years?
Justin, didn't we approve a plan? Is that happening this year?
Yes, it's in this year's budget, we'll work on it.
Awesome, that's great for you. And then, and similar to both the golf course and the zoo, thinking about cost recovery as well. So right now, there's, there is a general fund subsidy for the airport, is that the right amount? Is it, should it be higher, should it be lower? Having those conversations, setting those expectations about, about revenue at the airport, we think can, it can go a long way in terms of both setting service level expectations and also maybe take some pressure off the general fund as you guys are going through the budgeting process. So, so those are all of our service, all of our recommendation areas.
So next is really what happens after this. So we have provided back to the city, back to the departments, the report that you have now seen that really details out the recommendations. And, and our next step recommendation for the organization is to move into implementation. And as you, I'm sure, have read every word in the report, there's a lot in there, and there's a lot to digest. There's a lot for each of the departments to digest. And so our recommendation is that the council be patient, which I know is not, is often easier said than done, while the organization really takes time to digest what's in here and works to develop plans to implement the recommendations as, as they see fit and working with the city manager. There are certainly recommendations in this report that are policy-level recommendations. As we've talked a lot, as Ben talked a lot about, cost recovery goals. That's certainly something that is really obviously in the purview of you all as the elected officials, even some of the strategic planning-related items and setting direction for some of your facilities long-term. Obviously, conversations that staff will have to have with you at some point. But the bulk of the recommendations that are in the report are really operational in nature and that will fall on the shoulders of these two gentlemen and their staff to really, to assess how and when to implement, knowing as hopefully you've heard, you have two very busy and in some places constrained departments. And so implementation of some of these recommendations will take time and will have to be done alongside of all of the other things that are already being done. Most of these recommendations are not things that can be done overnight, or I guarantee you, they would have already been done. They're things that this department has, many of the things in here are not necessarily new. I'm sure when the organization read through these recommendations, many of them, as you even heard tonight, or some that they have either been in the works or things that they have talked about or have been on that wish list of things that they want to get to. And hopefully, we've provided some additional emphasis or at least some opportunity to continue to work through implementation over time. So I think with that, we'll certainly stop and turn it back over to you guys.
You guys hanging in there? Okay. That's a lot to take. We've put quite a few things on hold, knowing that this would probably be a defining moment for us of deciding where we want to go with some of the operations, determining whether or not our current practices are in keeping with where we want it to be, where you all want it to be in future years. And so this is very helpful to us because, you know, we're talking about positions, software choices, some of those have been put on hold. So I, I see it allowing us to do some immediate modification. But some of those other areas, like they said, will definitely require some ongoing conversations with the leadership of the governing body. So this is probably an incremental opportunity. I think there's probably some phasing involved, privatization of some areas. That could be a really long, protracted conversation, especially with organized labor.
Are you thinking about the mowing and the golf course cafe as some of the prioritizers and opportunity?
Looking at all of it, yeah. Yeah, and that's not going to please everybody. There's probably going to be some users that... I think we have to look at it real close to know what the benefit of that is, not just short-term, but also long-term. There's a reason why a lot of cities are doing it. In some areas, it makes a lot of sense. So it, it's something that we have to provide good enough information back to you all that it makes monetary sense first and foremost, but then also it has to make, it has to be of good service. So, yeah, I, I think it's probably going to be, probably a long process.
Well, I really appreciated the detailed recommendations in the report and how thorough you were, that it was a very, a data-driven report. I'm curious about, so when we, when we explore some of these opportunities to privatize certain services, I, I'm in, I'm in favor of exploring those opportunities. I do wonder if that's always hanging over the head of staff in those positions now. I'm not sure that's fair. So I, I think we need to be clear in our communication to our staff so that we don't struggle even more with retention if they think they've got one foot out of the door. And another, another comment I had was, and some of the recommendations based on some operational changes, such as creating a general labor pool in the parks department, like how, you know, that's another thing. It's going to be a process of changing the culture and do... I'm, I'm curious how you think that's going to work with horticulture.
Yeah, and that was a tough one because there's really two, two basic philosophies in grounds maintenance. One is you have a whole bunch of jack of all trades, and everybody can do a little bit of it. And generally, you do that, you assign people to locations. So this group of employees is responsible for, you know, the north half of town or south half of town or something. The other philosophy that we have taken is you have one person who's really good at irrigation. So that's all that person really does is irrigation. You have one person who's really good at pest, pest management, so that's all they do is pest management. So two completely different philosophies, they both, neither one's right or wrong. Looking at the labor market moving forward, moving more towards a general labor market or a general labor pool is probably going to be easier. We have absolutely struggled for our forestry position. And honestly, we are contracting out probably just as much work right now because we can't fill a position for a forester, because we still have a vacancy there. So that's one we can look at immediately, if that's the route we want to go. We do have contractors onboard already, we do an annual bid for tree removal. So that's not a, not a easy one. But yeah, the idea of going to a labor, well, that's something we can work towards. We've made, we've already made one step. Historically, we've had two forestry techs, we've converted one of those to a maintenance worker. Again, more of a jack-of-all-trades type person, not just a specific forestry. So we are already moving in that direction.
Yeah, one concern I have with that is that, you know, we have... Again, I'll bring up that I think the park maintenance side gets the short end of the stick. And I think maintenance is, like, facility maintenance and park maintenance, kind of the same people?
Depends on the activity.
Yeah.
And that, that's part of the data-driven piece of it, is I want to be able to tell that story a little bit cleaner on how much, how much time we actually are putting into a park versus how much time we're putting into facilities. Just off the top of my head, I'm guessing that our, our park operations group probably spends more than half of their time on, you know, fire department, on public works, on IT, on other folks. But we don't have a way of efficiently tracking that and reporting that out. So then that, that cost gets kind of eaten up. So we don't know, we don't understand the true cost of operating, you know, our fleet maintenance or operating our fire department, because a lot of that cost is hidden in my budget. So I think that's a piece we've got to move on quickly to get that, that going. It's a huge animal to tackle, and I've been struggling with it for a while. So I know that isn't exactly answering your, your question, but I think it gets us to where we can make some more of these decisions, is when you can have the data backed up, do any more than you advise.
There's other costs associated with privatization too, other than just the employee. Do we have specialized equipment for that department, for those people that we're not even using right now?
For, for forestry, it, it also aligns actually fairly well. One of our very oldest trucks in the fleet is our chippel truck. That's one we struggle with. We haven't, we haven't replaced it because we, it doesn't get used a lot, plus we knew this was kind of a name over the last seven years. So that's one, again, that sometimes the stars kind of align, and that may be a simple one to do. Now, I don't think there's a, sorry, I, I don't think there's a huge cost reduction there. I mean, I don't think you're going to look at, you know, because really that service per hour is actually probably more, you know, when we're paying our employees. Will they do it a little bit quicker, or they could maybe do it more efficient potentially, but it's not... But it's not, you're not going to look at, you know, actual small years in the next year. Like, oh, that's when the contracts out forestry. It's not going to be that stark a difference.
What are the expectations of the governing body going forward? I think that might be an area where we spend a little more time in kind of cultivating where you all want to go as a group. I think I know where most of you want to go individually, but as far as a group effort, what's the best format for doing that?
Well, I think there's some procedural sides of it that we need to kind of discuss a little bit after hearing and digesting this a bit.
Yeah.
For example, the pyramid, where we put our priorities on different departments, maybe for different areas, and maybe we pick out five or six things. And the five of us kind of come up with, you know, hey, where does the golf course land on this pyramid for me? And then we can kind of come up with some kind of ballpark, again, trying to give you a clear roadmap going forward on how you spread out those costs or absorb costs. That's one thing that struck out.
I think for me, I think that the fire department and the police department have proven what a data-driven organization can do. And I think that we need more data so we can say, you know, you can immediately pull up how much it costs to maintain sprinklers at all of our parks. And then compare that to an hourly rate with the, you know, I mean, I don't know if other cities are doing more contracting now because of, because they're having trouble finding help?
I would say in general, yes. But the help is hard to find. Even the contract help is hard, is hard to find. And communities have to adjust their standards or lose their expectations for what the response time is going to be and what the impact is going to be and the cost on contracting out. So, yes, absolutely, we are definitely seeing a lot more contracting out. But as anyone who's tried to do any home renovation right now knows, it's hard to find contractors for a lot of those services too. So, it's a, it's a little bit of a perfect storm.
Well, for me, I would like to know exactly what something costs. You know, if you go out and fix a curb, what did that cost? Or, you know, and know each job and what they cost.
And we do have that data. We're tracking how many hours it takes us to do tasks and how much equipment hours it's taking to do this task. So, we do have, we are tracking that information.
On the public works side, it's just...
Yeah, and it sounds like there's a problem and not, I won't use the word problem, but it's hard to do in the parks department.
Yeah. It's not as cut and dry on park size as it is in public works. Not those, you guys use Lucy, but there's multiple other softwares that are specifically designed for public works. It's really slim things on the park side. They just don't exist. It hasn't been a demand out there before.
The other thing to think about is, is when it comes down to a task that needs to be done, whether to hire it out is the response time, the capacity that it takes up. And it goes both ways too. We've had situations in the past where we put stuff out the bid and we say, hey, if we were to handle electrical on our own, how much would you take off this? Well, are you going to change the timeline for me? Because if you pull your guy off to go work on something else, I mean, it goes both ways. Those are things to take into account. But if it's something that doesn't have from timeline, maybe it's worth, that opportunity costs a big part of it, more so probably than dollars and cents.
Well, I know when I first read this, I, you know, you, you think when you get an efficiency study back, you're hoping for that silver bullet.
Here's the $70,000, or $80,000?
Yeah, here's where you're going to save. And I think that speaks to the work that's been done on our staff's part, trying to run a tight ship. Of course, improvements can always be made, but just want to recognize that. But I think a lot of these things have already gone down the road of cutting the easy fat, the, but things like the cost recovery program, I know that was in our parks and rec master plan as well too. And I don't know how to go about starting those conversations because, I mean, I can remember last time we talked about admission to the zoo. It was like a dollar. People went nuts. And I'm not saying we should charge for the zoo. I'm just saying that's what a cost recovery policy is.
But it could be something like cost for residents good and free and outsiders.
The cost recovery model is very common in the recreation side of things because it's a lot more easy. It's easier to attach that program, whether it's, you know, use softball or whatever, to a cost. It's a little bit more challenging for us because we don't collect a lot of that revenue. We do the maintenance, but we don't necessarily collect the revenue for...
Yeah. And people pay taxes for the services. And so, they feel like they're already...
But there are a few opportunities. It would be good to understand is, is the expectation for the golf course to be at what level? Is it, you know, right now, you know, we're at 70% cost recovery. Is that, is that good? Is that bad? Do we want to shoot from 75? It's, you know, just to have those to give me that, the goals and the overall strategies.
Maybe that's what we need to look at is, what do you turn, what do you two departments need from us as far as goals to adjust what your game plan is? Is that the way we need to be looking at this?
Personally, for me, that would help me. If there are, if there are a couple of things, and I've already got several noted here, things that are important to you as a governing body that I can work on. So, even the data-driven, you know, pieces has jumped out. And then also looking at some of those easy opportunities to privatize the forestry operation are the two things I've written down. And then, starting the conversation with revenue recovery or cost recovery. So, yeah, I think if there are two or three or four things that jump out to give me that direction, especially this time you're going into budget, that's the best time to start looking at those. That would help me. I don't know, I can't speak for Brian or Jeff.
Brian's like, give me my assistant director they said I needed, right?
I wish I answered that question.
Oh, goodness.
Well, I mean, you guys have a lot of crossing between your two departments. Is that, are there ways to make that more efficient? Should it not be intertwined as much? Like the ditch maintenance?
Yeah. I think, so, in my opinion, is the ditch maintenance was a failed experiment. We tried. It did save us quite a bit of money for a couple of year period, but there's some flaws in that. So, I think those are conversations now that it's, you know, out in the open a little bit more, that Brian and I just need to sit down and say, hey, this is, this piece isn't working, this piece is working. You know, one thing that wasn't talked about a lot is, you know, the right-of-way mowing is different than ditch mowing. And so, is it important that K-61, as an example, be managed like a park and look more, or manage like a ditch? I mean, those are two different service levels. So, I think those are the types of things that Brian and I can talk about, come up with some recommendations.
Well, I think there's some weird crossover on snow a little too.
Not, not as much.
Don't you have to do...
We do parking lots.
Don't you do main street?
Sidewalks.
No.
That's weird everywhere. I don't know, I do know why it's resource-driven and response, but, yeah.
We do all the streets.
I guess I meant the sidewalks in the business district of Maine.
Our sewer maintenance division goes and shovels all the ADA ramps in the downtown area.
Okay.
Do you have a feel for how much time and resources are spent on maintaining alleys?
Yeah, I don't have that information with me.
It's not this much?
It's actually, it's in the report. Yeah. I wanted to say 1,700 hours. That could be...
That number sounds about right.
A year.
Good.
It is a significant cost. And I was participating in a roundtable amongst other public works directors. And Dodge City had recently done this very thing of moving the trash pickup from the alleys to the curbs. And it was working well.
Did they handle it in regards to no parking on the street on certain days?
Well, they get into the details. What they said was the alley maintenance has reduced quite a bit. So, yeah. Was there pushback from the community or not? I don't know.
Anytime you're dealing with trash pickup, there's massive pushback.
Right.
I know that there's a few alleyways that continually put in tickets because it gets just smoothed out. And then two weeks later, after trash comes through a couple of times, and it's rained and it's all back because nothing's been packed down or nothing, or just kind of just gets ruined fairly quickly. I get a complaint all the time about this one alleyway, it's kind of near Plum and Sixth Street. And it's, they say every time trash, just a few weeks, the trash collector and boom, it's right back to...
Yeah, and the trash is going whether it's drained or not. And they are heavy equipment.
Yeah.
And there's also different expectations. So, certain people have a certain expectation for what their alley should look like. And, you know, they're, don't always, we don't always see eye to eye on that. So...
Would we have to renegotiate with Stutzman's if we moved it from the alley?
Let me look, but I would just, I've been through this a couple of times. One of the issues too, that you're likely to experience from residents are, well, it looks trashy now because now my neighbors have all the trash barrels in front of their front build line. And the same complainants typically don't exhaust just because you have a new trash policy. They're still calling in, so you still have to roll the graders. And on the zoning enforcement side, the code enforcement side, you now have less frequent traveling done in the alleyways, so less complaint reporting, which could be a good thing. But then also some of the trees start dropping lower. And the next thing you know, you have potentially conditions in the alley that you probably didn't anticipate early on.
So, some of our tree maintenance in the alley is by...
I'm sorry to say.
It's two birds, one stone.
The branches off as it goes.
In a way, all it is is if we get the complaints, that's the city's responsibility. We would put that back on the homeowner if their, their tree is low in the street, out in their sidewalk.
So, another question on the tug of war between efficiency and capacity. So, is there equipment, this would be a question to check into, I guess, I don't know. Is there equipment that we're not really getting many hours on each year that, let's say, the types of mowers being used in your department, you might have the same type of mower that you have in your department, but you're putting 10 times as many hours on, getting like 80 hours a year. It's more, we just have to have one in case we need it versus, you know, they use these all the time. Maybe we just borrow it or find some way to pool equipment a little bit if we're already trying to pool activity?
Yeah. I think that happens at a, at a kind of a frontline supervisor. You know, I think our, especially our frontline supervisors do a great job of communicating, hey, can you help mow this piece of ditch or whatever? Because it works better with the...
And that's absolutely something that I look at every year. So, we run, so we track how many hours and how many miles each piece of equipment goes. We track how many labor hours have gone into that and how much the parts have cost. So, we're reviewing all that as we're evaluating our equipment. And one of the things is how many hours and how many miles that piece of equipment used last year. And if it is low, why is that? And is that something that we can eliminate from the fleet and maybe look at renting?
That's where I would go. I mean, especially if it's something that's readily available through a rental program.
Yeah. So, in the last five years, we've eliminated like 13 pieces of equipment, over $700,000 worth of equipment that we sold off, that we found.
If there was a reason to sell the equipment, now's a good time to be selling it.
Yeah. And we'll continue to do that.
Yeah. Is the utilization rate, if it's needed for emergency services or if it's more just general maintenance?
So, I'm curious in your budgets, Justin and Brian, are you going to be including some of these recommendations, like the additional position and all?
And the additional positions in this year's budget.
Okay.
So, I had already planned that. It's been approved in the budget. I'm just waiting on approval to begin advertising. And just to make my little sales pitch here, so Joel Davenport, who is our superintendent of water and wastewater, he retires at the end of August. And so, it took two years to fill that vacant position when we hired Joel. And we're already down a management position over the utilities with this assistant director being held vacant. And so, when I have two of those, basically the two management positions vacant, that's the thing that keeps me up at night because I'm not sure how I'm going to manage.
In terms of the three divisions? That was administratively frozen. And you guys probably recall some internal confidential conversations or reporting that we did as to how some of the divisions and departments could be restructured very slightly and would solve potentially two issues within, you know, that whole service group. And tonight's conversation, I think, will probably reshape that conversation a little bit, depending upon what we want to do. I don't think you should expect staff to come back with a whole shift of how we do service. Don't worry, we're not going to, we're not going to throw that at you. This would be phased in. Grab the low-hanging fruit first, for sure. Adjust these decisions that we've had on ice for a while so that we can get those positions built back up and running. Now that we know that, I don't see anybody here tonight revolting over what they've heard. And data-driven's nice. It makes sense in a lot of ways. So, our budget modeling is going to be pretty consistent with what you've heard.
Have these results been shared with any of the other advisory committees, like airport or stuff like that?
No.
I don't believe so.
Staff have seen it, grabbed it, given it.
I'd like to further discuss the airport with you two. Do you find in most cities that it's under a different department? Is it its own department? I mean...
So, in the benchmark communities we looked at, there was only one other community that had it as part of another department. And it was in a park works department in that community. The other, the other benchmark organizations had it as a standalone department. You know, there's pros and cons to both, right? Right now, that airport manager doesn't have to do any, doesn't have to worry as much about budgeting and some of the HR stuff than you might have to as a director. But as a director, you might get, you know, more face time with y'all or more face time with the manager. So, there's pros and cons to both for sure. But that was the trends we saw in the benchmark communities.
And most airports have a business plan, a business plan?
Yeah. Of course, it's a best practice that.
That is something we want to include in the business plan, is looking at that reporting structure, staffing levels and those sorts of things.
I view this, this thing, especially with your tree plant, your tree forestry, we need the same tree forestry technician that cuts trees, will cut trees for us, will be the same tree forestry tech that goes and works for a contractor. I think you need to be more, get that tree, pay him some more money, make that position a little higher. You get to where it's competitive in the market, they'll come and work for the government anytime. Government offers more benefits. So, we have to be more competitive on the wage side of it. Because you're fighting for the same guy. You're fighting for the forestry tech that's working for a contractor. So, you have to make it a little bit better for us to take that forestry tech and make him competitive, competitive in the field. So, he can come over here to a government side, which in my views, a lot better to come work for us. So...
That's absolutely why we have to definitely fill that position.
Right.
Warriors, brothers and everybody else, they all pay them way off a lot of overtime. And they go and chase storms and...
Sometimes your people doesn't look for mostly overtime, they look for the benefits. I mean, if the benefits are better, they're going, you still fight for the same guy. He's got to make it better for him or her. And that's the way I look at it. I mean, we just have to raise our wages a little bit more to compete with the outside. Because it's the same person that's doing it.
I would agree in certain circumstances. If the cost benefit analysis of what we're getting out of the department as a whole is more efficient than hiring it out, then we need to try to fill that role. We don't need to look at it as an employment generator. We need to look at it as an efficient use of funds to get the job done. Sometimes privatizing it could be, sometimes better have it, especially if it's someone, hey, we've got a guy on staff that can take care of it right now. It depends on the use.
Well, but you get a guy for more money, he's going to be in the employee pool. He's not just going to...
Yeah, but one of the reasons why the private company might be able to pay them more is because they go around and they chase the storms. The city's not moving around state chasing storms and providing that extra revenue that the private company can make. They're taking more jobs because they have the mobility. Where city doesn't have that mobility, so then they can offer more incentive to pay. So, that's what he talked about where sometimes it's an individual situation, something that... So that's what he talked about, where sometimes it's an individual situation, something that is worth competing over or is it something that can just be privatized so that you can have a better level of service at a lower cost. And sometimes you can have a better level of service at a lower cost when we do it in-house. So I really think it depends on the situation. But I think when it comes to the trees, like I said, the city's not able, a private company can move around and have that mobility to get more jobs so that they have a higher budget and they can pay their people more.
If we're really good at bidding it out, we'll get good competing businesses to look at our needs and then looking at what those costs are to get what we need done and comparing that to what our costs are for having the equipment and having someone on staff that can do it full-time. If it is, unless they're just in the general labor pool. But I think it's kind of a specialized position, that's the case to look at. And we'll leave that up to Justin to figure out.
Anybody, as you know, I've worked, anybody that works for the city is going to go anywhere they need at any time, regardless of your electrician, if you're a tree cutter. If we have something go down, these guys are good at calling for help. They get help, we get their, whether they're street maintenance or they're water workers or whatever it is.
And I agree. I'm just saying in certain circumstances, the city or the business, it's worth hiring out a function. I have accounting needs. I'm not hiring an accountant to work for me full-time. I'll have someone do it for me on the side when I need it then because it's worth it dollar-wise. That's, that's where I'm comparing.
I understand.
We'll let Justin figure it out.
Or as a side use, it's like, okay, so like with my business, because I have the skills, it's cheaper for me to do the accounting in-house because I just do it myself, right? So it's kind of like the people that you were talking about, they, they will take care of it. So and for my business, it's cheaper for me to do the accounting because I already have the skills in-house and it's not going to add any digital cost. For him, different situation, different kind of company, that, see, that's two different, those are type of things that we have to look at. So it's not always a one-size-fits-all. We just need to pay that person more. We could be paying more for the same level of service than privatizing out. So we have to look at each situation separately.
The other thing.
Or we have to have Justin look at this and come back and tell us.
I've written that down.
The other thing we risk, though, is having the capacity when there's an emergency. So if we have a storm come through and we're relying on, we have to make sure we have an agreement with whoever the private company is, that they're going to be on the spot, only on the spot. That's one thing we would lack versus having someone full-time on staff. Those are the things to weigh in.
Another pyramid to create.
But no, it comes down to the tug of war of efficiency versus capacity and what we think we need for any, any potential situation that comes up versus the odds of those situations coming up. And I think that's where, among a bunch of things listed in here, is there's information we need from your departments and ideas that you have. But to be fair, I know there's information you need from us on, you know, where do you want us to be in five years? What's the goal? And so I guess, I don't know, there's going to be some, everyone goes home and thinks about it a little bit and comes back with, here's the answers I need to do, what I need to put together.
No, no, it's perfect. I just feel, I feel like you guys are getting the worst of us because we've been at this for twelve hours today. We really do like your report, but my God.
No, these are important, the issues that you're raising are all really important. And as I said before, if they were, if there were easy answers, they would have already figured it out.
Well, I would just reiterate that any moves we're going to make, I think, need to be really clearly communicated to your staff so they feel secure and appreciated and aren't wondering what direction we're going.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have the operational side, learning group, have them come back to us with recommendations. And then we need to work out the policy side and what are.
Or any staffing changes.
Yeah. So that we can give them a clear directional, I don't know how we feel, some of those cost recovery sessions is something I think we need to have.
We probably need to be looking at setting up a few times for budget sessions now that we're through the bulk of our other study sessions. Let the fun continue. Any other thoughts for the greater good before or during the session?
Thank you, guys. Well done.
All we thought I got is I've been in this chair too long today.
Yeah, thank you very much. Are you, where are you out of? Do you have to head home today or tomorrow?
Tomorrow. Well, Ben is in Florida and I'm in North Carolina.
Oh, my goodness. Well, enjoy your trip home without a mask, alone.
Park tour. There's eighty-five guests, right?
Oh, rub it in. Sitting in a coat.
I made it through today. Barely. I'm taking on my strength. No, I'm not. Maybe a nap tomorrow.